Good afternoon, everyone. As usual, I will not go through everything that's in my along director's report. I'm going to hit a couple of the highlights that I just want to share. And then I was going to spend just a little time. I had put together a statistical comparison for the second quarter of 2019 with second quarter of this year. This was our request from the board as we kind of emerged of it every three months. Just kind of take a look at comparative statistics. So, so individual statistics, the things that I just wanted to highlight. We, we had a really busy June. We all commented, all the staff commented how much busier it felt. And the statistics bore that out. So our foot traffic is the highest it's been since we reopened in July of 21. It's up about forty five, forty three percent from July, which is great. We'll talk about the quarterly comparison in just a bit. The, the, the two statistics that really tickled us. So the, the first one was a couple of months ago, I had shared that one of our YouTube videos got picked up by YouTube's recommendation algorithm. And so one month we had, I think about six thousand, sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred views of it. We thought that was amazing, you know? We thought, oh, wow, this is really cool. So I was looking at the day statistics and two of our videos, one was viewed three thousand times, and another one was viewed six thousand times. And they were both videos by Sabrina, our teen librarian. And so we, and the geographic reach, it's interesting. U S is the first country, but India and the Philippines are where, where it is. So we, we've told Sabrina, she's world famous. You know, if she gets off a plane in, in Manila or Bombay, or she's, yeah, you know, it'd be like the Beatles. For me, that, you know, in this day and age we live in, that, you know, we have boundaries of our city and boundaries of our service area, but especially with electronic content. They can go, they can go everywhere. So that was kind of neat and fun.
I had this overwhelming desire to make sure that the people made the same numbers. Say, wait a minute, how do I do that?
Yeah. It, it's very close. So the vendor says, and actually our new badges, I could talk about a little bit. Our new badges have gotten even closer. So we have new badges. You might be able to see these badges make staff invisible to their people counters. So the pattern does, it recognizes us, that it knows not to count us. So now our ins and outs are getting a little closer because we go in and out.
Or, or we work at Foot Locker.
Yes.
Or just got rid of these.
Or you play the jazz.
Yeah, yeah.
So the other stat I wanted to highlight was our new card registrations in June. They were the second highest monthly total ever going back twelve, ten years to back to 2012. The only month that was higher was August, 2016, which was when the building reopened after construction. And we only missed it by three cards. So we had three hundred eighty one cards in June, August, 2016. We had three hundred eighty four cards, but it was really nice to see that. We welcomed two new staff members since we last met. Garth Fullington, our library safety specialist, started, has no meeting back in June, right? Yes, back in June. He is, he's picked up our cert, he's learning our circulation department. He's taken some shifts in our computer area and also really helping us with, you know, with some, some issues we have in the library. And I think tomorrow, no, today, he is doing his first outreach. He's going to go and spend an hour at the loved one shower cart event up at Brax Laundry. Just to kind of make some connections with loved one and, and so very pleased to have Garth. We were also very pleased to welcome Liz Strand Ludeman as our new full-time circulation coordinator. Liz has been with us since 2019 as an on-call library assistant. Our four previous circulation coordinator left for another position in March. And so we took the opportunity in March to take a look at the position, do some revisions of the position description, do some revisions to the, the compensation post for it. And Liz was, he's a candidate and we are thrilled. She is the bull, she did amazing job in that interim period, being the interim circulation coordinator. Has, and has brought a lot to our circulation department. So very pleased to have those two positions filled. We were very busy over the past couple of months. I won't talk about all the events, a couple that I'll highlight. We had our first in-person summer reading concert in three years. So we had the Alpedicians thing outside. I had about ninety people through the course of the, of the concert. Such, so that was a lot of fun. We also had our first Touch a Truck event since 2019. And oh my goodness, that was, there, there were conservatively 500 people showed up for that. It was, it was a lot of fun. It was a day, we were very short staff that day, but we made it work. But it was great. The, the kids and the parents had a great time. And it was, there was a lot of just great energy around that event. So we're very happy to have that. In June, we also had our first, our, we had our twenty twenty-two Juneteenth event take place outside here. There has been an event there for the last, this was the third year in a row. There's been an event, the previous two years were community, you know, done by the community, kind of a grassroots thing. This was the first year that the city department was able to sponsor and, and hold that. So we had a, we had a, a great time, about a hundred people showed up. The weather, the weather was really touch and go. We, we, we made it, but it was, it was great. We had some great musical performers. We had Emmett Wheatfall, who is a poet that we, a local poet. I thought his performance was his poetry, it was outstanding. It was, it was really powerful. We've got the, for anybody who may be watching this at home or in the future, we do have the Juneteenth presentation. Willamette Falls did a wonderful job of helping to record that and produce a video for it. And so we've got that posted on our YouTube channel so people can watch that. The other things I was going to talk about just recently, we have had some community, some partnerships. We partnered with Parkland County Sustainability and Solid Waste and a local repair group to have a repair fair here in the library. So we had P55 items to see if they could be repaired. Picture of it, it was great, it was well attended. We had Barrett, our youth services librarian, presented a special story time at the recent First City event. So library had a presence at First City. And then our adult services librarian, Gina Bacon, was at a table at Parkland Community College's Summer Connections event, which was great for us to get the library to get link information out there. And I also wanted to recognize our adult services librarian, Jen Giovinetti, who is our BAM coordinator. She got an article published by Syracuse University Project Enable, which is a professional development resource for library, library staff and librarians throughout the country about bringing, bringing services to library users with disabilities and underserved populations. So congratulations on Jen on getting her, she ordered an article at our BAM program and she got.
Hey Greg.
Yes.
Can you send that out?
Yep.
Jen's article.
Yep. I will certainly do that. And then the last thing from the update in the link updates, just want to make sure everybody knows. Starting July first, we added electronic magazines to our, our overdrive platform. So you can now browse and search through hundreds, if not thousands of magazine titles. They are always available, no, no waiting on any of them. As many people can use them at once as, as they want. I, it's the way that I now prefer to consume my magazines on my tablet or on my device. And, and thanks to this, I can now get rid of two subscriptions that I have. And so I'm saving, even just me personally, I'm saving about eighty dollars a year on, on two magazines that I, I can now get through the library for free. So they're a great resource for patients to have. Any questions on any of those or anything else that was in the, in the?
I was going to ask you about the comparison, quarter comparison. I didn't know if you were going.
Yep, let's do that next, we'll do that next. Yep, before we get into that, anything, any other questions on, or anything else in the, in the report? Hearing none, or the quarterly comparison? So the last time I presented this, I did a month over month, so one month. Now that we have a little more time, I just aggregated those three months together. So we have quarter, depending on how, whether you go calendar, fiscal, I just called it quarter two. So April through June of 2019 versus April through June of this year, 2022. And I've got the comparisons, I've got the data in the first ones and a percentage change in the third column. I did add some notes on some of these measurements, just because there are some that were not, it's not really apples to apples comparison. And so I just wanted to highlight a couple of those on the adult materials circulation. First, I wanted to make sure people who've been on the library board for a long time or in the library world probably know what, how we count circulation. But just so everybody remembers, or when libraries report circulation statistics, it includes both the initial checkout of an item and then it includes every time an item gets renewed. So if somebody checks something out, renews it three times, that counts as four circulations. So you'll see on the adult materials, you know, the, the numbers have gone down. Part of that, I believe, is due to the fact that in between 2019 and 2022, we increased the loan period on a very high circulating item, which is DVDs and Blu-rays. So in 2019, if somebody had a DVD out for four weeks, that would be four circulations. A checkout and then a renewal, a renewal and a renewal. Now, since the loan period is now two weeks, they would check it out and renew it once and then renew it again. So in, in a four week situation, what used to count as four circulations now only counts as three circulations. So I'm not sure that it, okay. I, I think that's part of the reason for that, especially when we look at some of the other circulation numbers. You can see, for example, children's materials was up seven percent between, between the measurement periods. The, the two that I kind of look at that mean the most to me, and I've bolded those on the report, was the first time physical circulation. So that's things that are going out for the first time, you know, people coming to the library, checking materials out for that first time. And I also highlighted the borrowers that we have. So that's the number of unique borrowers that come into the library every month. And you can see both of those numbers are right around down twenty percent between 2019 and, and, and now. And that to me, that, that feels, you know, that feels right. We're not as busy as we were back then, but we, you know, we built way back up from a window, especially when we're closed, but, you know, looking at the stats, that, that twenty percent is probably the closest I would, you know, if you're going to ask me, what is our overall business? You know, like I'd say probably about twenty percent down.
Is there any way over time that you will be able to assess the impact of a thousand books before kindergarten on youth or children's circulation?
There's probably not a direct way to do, you know, we can look at circulation over the time period when we started, when we started books. It's hard, there's, you know, we could try to, in an ideal world, we could try to lay for a certain relations from somebody who is a library customer before a thousand books and after a thousand books. Privacy reasons, we don't keep a lot of that thing that, that would enable, enable that type of comparison. But I'll look into it.
A lot of effort into it, I just wondered if there was any, any cause that you could, you could point to? Because if we want to, you know, expand that program or market it more, you know, if we has, oh yeah, you know, as a result of a thousand books, we had, you know, three hundred more kids, you know, checking out books or whatever.
Well, you know, what we do have is we do have the purchase spend self-reporting how many books they've read. So I think I, I, I'll include in our next director's book, but we sent a, I'll have an update for the foundation. I want to say we have, going off the top of my head, so forgive me. It's, it's rightful of three hundred participants, I think is about what we have in those books. I think they've already reported reading something, it's in the tens of thousands of books, you know, that they've already logged into their reading.
So is it maybe be true to say that the kids that are enrolled in that are reading more books than kids who are not?
I, we could probably find some statistics from like the census that would say, you know.
About how that's impacting, you know?
Yeah, but that's, that's.
I don't want it to be burdensome, no, it's just a curiosity more than anything.
Probably be picking up the kids that are readers to begin with, you know.
Yeah, it's hard to know what the impact is. If there's some reasonably non-birdensome way to figure that, I'd like to know.
Well, I think that some of what we do, we've got Sabrina here, so you can correct me if I inevitably misstate something. You know, I know like for summer reading, we asked the question of participants, did your, did your reading, you know, did you read more during the summer that you would, that you would, than you would have read without having a summer reading program?
Or did your reading, did the reading improve, did the reading improve, decline or state of that?
Right, right. So that might be a pretty easy data point that we can set for participants. You know, do you feel that your participation in the program improved your, you know, improved your interest in reading? Did it, did it help prepare them for school, just the whole purpose of that, books? So yeah, that we could, that we.
I, I have Garrett's staff, she sent us.
Oh, excellent.
Two hundred and seventy registrations, ten entries have earned the five hundred books badge. Four readers have completed the one thousand books challenge. And twenty-three thousand four hundred and forty books have been read as part of the challenge.
That's great.
Yes, excellent. That's, that's really great. I don't know what those all mean, but that's a great number.
All right, so and back to the stats, the only other one I wanted to highlight, again, another one of those non-apples to apples comparisons are the internet sessions. So back in 2019, you know, a session counted as sixty minutes. So every time somebody used it for sixty, if somebody using the computer for three hours back in 2019, it would count as three, three sessions. Now we've increased our session usage to a hundred twenty minutes. So the same person using it for three hours would only count as two. So again, different counting bases take into account when you look at some of these stats. And, and then the, the social media stats. I'm, I'm really impressed by, you know, the growth in that. A lot of that was prompted by the pandemic. We didn't have a choice, you know, this is how we're going to get information and programs out. And thankfully, a lot of the people who we've attracted via social media have stuck with us and we're still able to provide engaging contents. And our social media team does a great job of, of creating content and putting it out there. So I'm really pleased with, with the growth in there. And things like YouTube views, especially thanks to Sabrina's, you know, thirty thousand, thirty-eight thousand views. You know, we get some really great percentage increases, so.
We hear the royalty checks are going to be.
So, so yeah, with that, any questions about specific things on there? Or I suspect Nick has a, has a couple of questions?
Actually, I've been thinking about that when I went through them. I was curious, you know, with the twenty percent kind of reduction in the participants, I guess. I, I don't know, particularly, you know, the number of people that are using the library. Is that, how do we, how do we, how do we measure success? Is it the number of people, the number is material more important than the number of people that are, that are involved?
I, I, I would say that, that would be a really good discussion. From my perspective, that would be a good discussion to have. We have that discussion with our director's group all the time. There's been a lot of discussion over the past couple of months, especially post-COVID, you know? How do you measure what's successful? How do you measure the impact your library is having on the community? And especially in a time where, like, for example, the eBooks, you know, we know that people aren't coming in, you know, we're still not comfortable coming into a library facility. And so, you know, are there, are we totally losing them? No, I don't think so. You look at our eBooks and, you know, those, those are up thirty percent. So they might be interacting with the library in a different way than they have in the past, but trying to quantify that and put it all together to get a, to get a picture of what the, what the usage is. And you can spend a lot of time doing that. So I think it would be a great discussion to have in the future, what metrics are really, you know, kind of illustrative of the impact we're having and what is of interest to the community and the board that you want to see reported on a regular basis?
Yeah, mate, right now, we're pretty much just comparing, you know, month to month, year to year, that type of thing. But I was, it made me think about, again, with our service area and the number of people that we have in it. You know, is, is that the number of people that are checking out books and the number of people that are, have library cards? Is that good? I don't.
Well, but I mean, there's also things like, like Touch a Truck. You know, we, I, we have an estimate of how many people we had, you know, about five hundred people. We don't have any way of quantifying, you know? I, I would have to guess that probably out of those five hundred people, there were a lot of new users. There are a lot of people who hadn't had the chance to come to the library and, and be exposed to it. I, I mean, I think that's part of the reason our card signup was so high that month is we had a lot of people for an event, they realized, oh, you know, I'm in the library in a couple of years. Maybe it's time to come back, so. Yeah.
I mean, I, I was interested just to see what the post-COVID, just how long this is going to take to get to some, whatever the next normal is. I'm not sure with post-COVID yet.
No, no.
Right, or a percentage of the collection that circulates?
We do not have, I, I can pull that, that is not something that.
Because of the size of our collection, we have to be really efficient.
Yeah.
And I, I, it would be great if we found out like over the course of a year that ninety percent of the books on shelf actually are reused.
That's a good, that would be a good stat.
Yeah.
We can easily pull that. Anything else?
All right, public comment, is there any request for public comment in these? No, hearing none, we'll move on. The designation of the teen advisory committee is a library board committee. As, as you know, we, we, we spoke about taking the task forces and the, the advisory groups and making them committees of the, that there'd be more accountability, very clear that we'd be much better connected to, to them. And this is the first one that we were, the second one, I think we did that, right?
We did BAM, yeah.
Right, that we're bringing to the board. So it's described and any comments?
And, and I'll let everybody know, we've got Sabrina, teen librarian here. So if you've got any questions about TAC or anything, she is the expert, so.
Any impact on the, or feedback from the, just the student participants themselves?
About the change?
Well, you know, COVID was a challenge for teens during, during the time when they were transitioning to online learning. And we, I, I felt that I didn't want to add to that stress. This is, I'm talking 2020 and going into that summer. So I kind of let things go and just touched base with them on, in email. And then last year I met with them as a group on Zoom every month. And then I think, I want to say April, we had our first, this past April, we had our first in-person meeting. And we had in-person meetings for April and May. And during that time, we worked out, I talked about, we, we lost, we ended up losing two grad students graduating. We had a student move and we have one that's studying abroad the last year of her school. So we are only left with three members moving into the fall. But with those three members and with the ones that were exiting, we worked on shifting from what used to be called TAG, the Teen Advisory Group, to Teen Advisory Committee. And we talked a lot about, actually in the fall, about what we wanted to do with moving in the direction of being more involved with the library board and having a liaison and all that. And they were very receptive to that, they thought it was super cool. And then we worked on the purpose statement that you have in front of you. And that was pretty much all of them. They, they came up with that and we worked a little bit of it afterwards, just to make it flow a little bit more. But I mean, overall, it was a really positive, they're, I think they're really looking forward to it. And I think ultimately, you know, teenagers want to have, they want to be treated like adults. And they want to have responsibilities. And part of my job is to, moving forward, is to give them that opportunity to create and make change in their community. And part of that is also like meeting with a liaison from the board and feeling involved in their community library.
And recruitment?
So I put the very, very tail end of revamping what was our teen advisory group now TAC website? And that'll, that'll talk about all of what, what is Teen Advisory Committee or the responsibilities of Teen Advisory Committee? And we are, and I'm going to have an online application and a paper one in case somebody doesn't have access to an online form. And we'll be opening up that recruitment August fifteenth and we'll run it for a month. Generally, in the past, we've run it in the, in the month of July and then given the month of August to do interviews. We like to just do it as if it's they're getting a job. So it's taken a little bit of time, but I also wanted them to kind of get settled into school so that they can think about, yeah, what, what if they're feeling, especially ones that are going into high school, they often aren't sure if they're going to be able to handle doing something like this in addition to a new school and a new routine. So giving them that opportunity to, to assess their own lives. So it'll be open for a month, starting in the middle of August. And since I'm the primary supervisor for that group, starting out, we're going to, we are going to limit the spaces to ten advisory committees. I'm not hard and fast on that number. We get eleven people, that's great, you know, it depends on kind of how it works out. But that's just kind of where I feel comfortable starting, so that's where we are.
Thank you.
And Heidi, when the board has expressed interest in being the liaison for this committee, so, so that, that'll work out great.
Yeah.
Any questions about the description, the, the purpose of the committee or how it's going to work? Seems pretty straightforward to me.
The, the one thing we did, we missed one, we're in the proposal. I'm going to add a request for one word, actually two words, the and. In that third purpose where it currently says provide opportunities, develop leadership skills through planning and organizing teen events. After a late breaking discussion, we'd love that to say teen projects and events.
Okay.
So I have read that into the record now, so that would be my, my request that as you, as you consider this, to have that in your mind is the, that's what we use for that third, that third goal.
So hearing no other questions, if there's to be a motion to accept this as amended, become a committee of the board? Okay, great, second please? Second, okay, great. All in favor of designating the teen committee? Aye, aye. So be it.
And then, and you're going to, as chair, you get to designate liaisons, so you.
Yeah, I'll designate Heidi Blackwell as the board member that will liaise directly with that committee.
Great.
Great. Go, go.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody, it's simply exciting. Thank you.
Thanks, Sabrina.
Thanks for answering my question, thank you.
Okay, the other two items were one, reviewing the draft questions that we, the Strategic Planning Committee met and then we, we met briefly thereafter about adding questions about the survey for the unincorporated area. Make sure the library is meeting the needs or how we could better meet the needs. And you should have sort of the draft questions that we wanted to, to add to the city's survey and then have a subsequent piece related specifically to the library.
Yeah, so, so, and I think, I, I, I think, yeah, Oz, you're, the, the, the three that we have here.
Right.
That were on the, on the committee, so, so the rest, you three will have to listen to me again, but just to make sure that everybody's used to the speed. Yeah, as we talked about, the, the city puts out a biennial satisfaction survey, just to city residents for all city services. So our proposal with this is we will pull out the library-related questions from that survey. We're just looking a little bit just to make them library-specific and send those out to the unincorporated area. And on the sample that I have given you, those questions basically go to that first demographic section. So after, on page, of your packets, page twenty-two, there, you'll see there's a little dotted line on page twenty-two. Everything above that are the questions that we're pulling out from the city, the existing city survey. The questions that are below that dotted line are additional questions that we would like to put on a survey that's going out to our unincorporated residents. Just trying to. Um, just trying to uh uh feeling a little more information about how they do currently use the library. Um, uh, what barriers, you know, they might be experiencing in using the library. And getting some information from them on their awareness of services that the library offers and um and getting some feedback from them on um on what we might be able to do to improve. So for the people that were on the committee, I just want to uh point out the kind of the two suggestions that we had um, that came out of that, we're putting in a question on satisfaction of library hours. And so you'll see that is in on page twenty, question third, I did add a question about how satisfied the hours and days the library is doing. Um, that will be, that will be a question that currently is not on the city survey. Um, it'll be on the other, but that's something that we might be able to put on the survey in the future. Um, and then there was um a suggestion from the committee about um uh, oh, and I realized I duplicated numbers. Sorry. It's on page four, the second to last question. Are there other actions to take to improve services outside the city? Uh, we asked them of the things that are listed above, what's most important for you? But then we also have a free form, you know, a free form thing where people can give us things that we didn't think about. And of course, I would make sure that all the the numbering is correct.
Greg, you were also going to speak to the vendor and see if there was any additional cost to do it at a different time.
There should not be any additional cost. And and I talked to, my my other concern was um stepping on the toes of any other surveys that are going on, but we should be able to go for this on our own schedule. So if we want to do this sooner than the sooner than the city survey, we should have.
And the city survey will be done in January, February, so.
Uh, it's set to go out sometime in September or October.
Oh, better.
Um, and then they collect the results and get them back in January. But again, this is going to completely different groups. So there there won't be this you know, overlap. But yeah, we should be able to go out and get it done quickly.
It's a long survey.
Yeah.
It is.
It it is a long survey. The I, the part of the length is because we really, I wanted to have that apples-to-apples comparison of stuff that we've been asking city residents for a long time to be able to compare, you know. And we've heard this from the city residents over the years. What do unincorporated folks think? Do they have the same perceptions or are there areas that we need to focus a little more? And then we want to take the opportunity since we're going to be sending them stuff out anyway, let's get some basic questions. Do you do you think it's too long or do you think there's?
Well, I think the length is going to decrease the response rate. Uh, whether, but we'll get more people who are seriously concerned responding.
Yes, well, and and to to make sure it's clear, so we're going with a professional vendor to do this. So this is going to be a statistically valid survey. So it will not necessarily go out to every single person in the unincorporated area. The vendor, just like they do with the city survey, is going to look at demographics. And they're gonna, I mean, and they'll keep working it until they get the number that we need. So, you know, if they determine that we need, I'm not a statistician. So but I I think like the magic number is sometimes like it's like it's around four hundred or five hundred, something like that.
Relatively true.
Yeah, yeah. But so so the the vendor will keep working and reaching out to folks until they get, you know, that.
Uh, this is not a question about the current one, because as you say, apples to apples.
Yeah.
But is there some reason why it goes from very satisfied to very dissatisfied rather than the the opposite, which seems to be the standard in the industry is on the left side, you get the dissatisfied people, on the right side, you get the satisfied. There's no political content there.
Yeah.
Uh, I can certainly try and I can ask the vendor. I I would have to guess that the reason it's currently that way is because that's the way it's been done in the past.
I'm only interested.
Yep.
I'm not criticizing.
No, 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 no. That's a good question. You're right. Yeah.
I I taught research methods.
Yeah, right.
Those against what I taught, so.
Should we have a butterfly ballot version of the?
Greg, do you think it's going to be possible for us to get data around, um, I'll say I'm curious if it's going to be different reasons depending on how far away people are from the library. Do you think that they can, they can give us that kind of?
Hmm.
Uh, like three mile, five, I don't know, say ten miles from the library or you know, and the next one would be fifteen miles from the library. Would we, you know?
I believe I will triple check and confirm with the vendor, but when the vendor, they do get a breakdown of responses. You know, they they can say, we got, you know, these responses from this area of the city, in this neighborhood, this neighborhood. So I believe that is something uh that they'll track. I'll I'll get some more information from them, whether it's by, you know, by census tract, I don't know, in the unincorporated area or how they do it. Yeah, I think we'll be able to do some granularity, yes. Because, yeah, you're right. The the farther out, you know, and we have a very big service area, the farther out people are, I would expect the distance becomes a bigger barrier. Um, and they have different needs or different suggestions on how to overcome that.
Hey, any other questions about that? If not, let's proceed. Um, I mean, if if the city's going out in September, I don't know that we need to do it at a different schedule necessarily. But if it was going to be January or February, then I would like to have gone out sooner.
I I will, we'll get this. So I, I guess, my my intention is if there's nothing, you know, in here that that and this is the first time we're doing this. And so in the future, you know, we'll have the opportunity to if we forget, you know, if we decide, oh, there's more information we want to ask, we can always do it um in the future. But as long as it's okay with, you know, the base here, we'll go and do a little cleanup. I'll meet with the vendor, but if there if there's nothing, I just want to make sure there's nothing totally missing off of here or something that people feel really strongly should be included in here before I go forward, working with the vendor to get this done.
It sounds like the budget impacts around ten, ten grand.
That's, yeah, that's that's my guess.
Anybody? Okay, thank you. Um, the last item on the agenda is uh the Strategic Planning Committee, just the recommendation that Greg had presented, uh, how how he wants to go about getting the tactical um, plan done. And this is exactly what we looked at in the committee and that as we tweaked it, and I I think it's great. So this is those who weren't at that meeting, this is a format that I mean, it's, you're going to be doing the work, so it needs to work for you. And we just want to be sure that we can get the uh, the impacts.
I think part of the beauty of um the tactical plan is it demonstrates that the strategic plan just isn't on the shelf.
Right. Yeah.
And that I have the habit of something that is being you know, reviewed and measured in terms of the projects that are coming out of there. I think it really gives it uh gives us, you know, a a good way to demonstrate that um that it's very active.
Right. And that we're focusing on priorities.
And priorities, yeah, good point.
Yes, that's, that's a huge one. Um, so yeah, unless there are questions about the format.
I was particularly impressed by the first one.
Oh.
Did you read it?
You must have studied Latin. I did.
Actually, uh, I have a, I'm sourced for this in my notes if you're ever.
Oh, really? The the Lauren. Oh, wow, yeah. There, I, there are generators online now. You would say, I need eight paragraphs worth of of of. Yeah. So, okay, so if if I think, I I do want to um just so I can make sure I relay, um, Heidi had some um feed, she wasn't able to be here. Her, her question that she asked about the strategic, about this particular item was, was there going to be any opportunity for doing community engagement around this? And my answer to her um was, you know, at this point, this discussion that we're having today is about the format of the tactical plan.
Right.
And and so I I I hadn't planned to do any significant community engagement around that. In future strategic planning processes, you know, yes, of course, we would, we would build in, you know, when it comes time to renew the strategic plan, we're I think it'll be a good discussion for us as a, to have with library board, how we want to do it. But I think the last time around, you know, we can be the, how many people are on that committee? Lots. Yeah, like a twenty or twenty-five.
Yeah.
And there are different ways to do it, you know, surveys, or you mix and match, but we'll talk about how we want to do it. So I I told her that in the future, yes, there would be the community engagement on developing these plans, but for this discussion, since it was just more about format and and kind of building blocks of it, I didn't, I didn't. I personally didn't see a need to, you know, put out a survey, what do you think of our tactical plan format?
Yeah.
Um, but if if the work feels differently.
Yeah, I just, really, really, that's really an internal library, unless something in the tactical plan as you go through it indicates that there's a service problem, I don't really feel like that appropriate place for a lot of, you know, um, public input, because really the work of the staff.
Yeah.
Unless it shows up somewhere that they're not, people are not satisfied by service, and you look at your tactical plan, it's like, oh, I see we could.
Yeah.
Like, but really, I don't think you want the public managing operations.
Okay. Okay, I I wanted to pass on with her feedback. Um, and sorry to skip, uh, to go back to one item, I forgot, I forgot to give her feedback on the the survey. She did say it would be important to make sure for the final one, that we very clearly differentiate that, you know, make it clear to the unincorporated residents that we're asking a question about the library and not any city services. But I think we, you know, I'll I'll take another look at it to make sure there's nothing that's generic in there to the city of Oregon City. Um, that was her feedback on the previous. Sorry, I didn't add that to the finals. Okay.
Right.
Um. Yeah. And then the other, the other um one that I included on here was just a basic, um, so we have tactical plan. And and then we had a base plan um format, um, just not, not, not as detailed as some professional uh project planners have 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 uh project managers have done in the past. Um, but I think based on our discussions, it kind of captured kind of what we, what we'd all like to know about how we're going to go forward with some of these. For for the the tactical plan items that are sophisticated enough to require a project plan, this is a format that we can distribute. Some basic information down there, tool to talk about the resources being allocated, the milestones, sources of funding, um, and help us keep on track and help us communicate that better. So.
Sure.
So if that I guess, yeah, I would, I would.
Go forth and flag.
Okay, all right.
Um, communication, the foundation.
Um, we would not meet this month. Um, just quite enough uh business to pursue, you know, an agenda. But we did have a great presentation back in May and June, June, especially from Brian Johnson from Morgan Stanley, because, you know, the foundation has assets. And the assets have been very conservatively invested. And so we decided to take a look at how we might better, be better stewards of those resources without putting the resources at risk. And so Brian Johnson gave an extensive presentation um about the kinds of investments that might work for us, which maximize, you know, the the impact of those investments while minimizing risks, you know, equities versus bonds, for example. And it was, he had a lot of great handouts that showed the performance of various um bonds and equities over time. So we could look at, well, how does this really work out over time? And um liquidity and all various other investment strategies that we had some questions about. And um, he's going to come back at our next meeting. And we're going to talk to him about changing our investment strategies.
How much money is, what are we talking about?
About depending on how much we decide
Yeah.
to to uh do some uh, about fifty to sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah. That, I think that, that was the original suggestion. I think the the foundation does have some more assets. Some of them are pledged to some.
Right, right. Some we can't.
Own costs, yes.
Yeah, some are are committed and some are are flexible. So it was quite an interesting um, time with him and his handouts were extremely helpful to those of us who are not, you know, analysts in the financial field. He was um, very patient with our, us and our questions. Um, I just, it as a kind of a side note to the the um Oregon City Schools Foundation, um, their representative was present as uh as part of the executive official board members. And um, they're going to move in using that strategy for their investments as well. So just to make, be good stewards, but also to maximize the impact of them.
Yeah. And I think the the other thing um that was discussed, he presented um you know, they have different funds that you can invest in, and some have a social um
Yes, uh, social.
Social conscious or socially socially conscious funds that try to not invest in bets like conflict minerals and and the like.
No blood diamonds.
Yes. And and I think in some of those, yeah, there was a very minor performance. Um, but I I think correct me if if I'm misremembering, but I think the sentiment of the group was very much that we think that, yes, being socially responsible, investing in those socially responsible um funds is the way to go, the money that we have from our public.
ESGs, environmental, social and government. And and the impact of investment over time, difference between ESG, they're less socially responsible is pretty minimal.
Yeah.
Also, we just reported that the mural on the bookstore is done.
Yeah.
So.
You're stealing my thunder.
That's next.
Forget you're her.
And now the friends.
Not only is the mural done, but it has been dedicated.
Yes.
Last week, I think.
Yes, yeah. Yep.
Uh, and the only other thing that came up at the meeting was they still stock with DVDs and CDs. I would be delighted if uh you all go down and buy a bunch of them. So I've the entire test kitchen.
Oh.
Series for like eight dollars.
Excellent.
Wow.
I I knew my part with CDs. I'm a big music fan, so I go over there and I I I bring home a lot of CDs. So much to my wife's chagrin, because we don't have shelf space for them anymore.
Anything else with the friends? No, no.
Sorry.
I have not heard from Eldak uh in quite a while. So uh, Greg, do you have any, any news or anything going on?
The only update I have is that the new library network manager, Rick Peterson, started Monday, twenty fifth. Yeah. So his first official day was Monday, the twenty-fifth. So um.
Go easy on her.
Yes, yes. He sent out an email on Tuesday saying, hey, I'm looking forward to meeting with you all. Um, give me, you know, be, please be patient with me while I get my my feet under me. And speaking from experience, that's, he's got a lot that he's, is going to be coming at him pretty quick. I presume that once he's got kind of his under him, there will be some Eldak is one of the things that's under his, under his uh, under his daily work. And so he'll, he'll hopefully we'll have some more information about that in the next month or so.
Okay. Hey, and and then there's a staff report about future uh agenda items, which we'll be adding as we go forward. Um, what shall we do for next month?
Uh, well, so, yeah, on the future, I I changed the format. I just tried to show the ones that we that we hit, just so we can show that, yes, we're making progress on these. Um, I did add um a couple on there. Um, the, I put the state libraries digital report, because that's going to be coming up. Uh, we submit that in October, so I know I like to bring that to this group to take a look at, you know, before for submission. Um, I added the format of the scope of library board minutes. Um, I did talk to our city reporter about that. So, you know, that that would be an easy one to have a discussion about. Um, for me, operationally, I think probably the the biggest one is some of these policy ones. Um, yeah, especially the community room policy. I I will report. I I put it in here, um, our, this is a domino effect. Our city's communications director, um Kristen Brown, she got another job um with city, with City Portland, the two-eleven service, which is fabulous for her.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the city is without a full-time communications coordinator at the moment. Couple of different departments have stepped in to um shoulder some of that load. One of them is Aaron from our staff. So he is doing a lot of work to help support the city's social media efforts, communication efforts. Aaron was also the one who was helping me work out the policy for the community room. And so his time has been a little impactive lately. So um, I am hopeful that I'm going to be able to bring the community room policy back to this group next month. Um, but I'm going to hedge my bets based on Aaron's workload. Um, and I think we, I would like to do the collection development policy review. Um, sooner rather than later, we had some good discussions in a previous upward meeting about um uh, about a couple of changes we'd like to make, um, especially the 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 challenge process to make that, um you know, bolster that. Um, honestly, there's a, I, you may have seen the news, there in in Curry County, up in Curry County. The the board of county commissioners sent letters to all the libraries expressing shock and dismay about some of the materials that were. So I I think it would be incumbent on us to 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 really, you know, look at our collection belt policy and just make sure we've got that all, you know, dialed in the way that we want. So I think for me, those are kind of the two that rise, the that rise, um that rise things that I would like to talk about um sooner rather.
We'll call that Darwin, no Darwin. Yeah.
So, yeah, if that's
I had a question about, well, can you, I I don't remember the exact uh what this item is, but the library board engagement plan, I I I'm like blanking on what that means.
So, um at the beginning of the year, um I talked with David that we would like to, and I think we talked with the board about it. This is six or seven months ago, so of course, yeah.
Email, just asking what interests you have in terms of working on any issues or particular um sectors we're doing. And and both are doing it, I mean, foundation, the friends and Eldak, teen program and now. And so it it was just to make sure that particularly for the new board members, for for Elizabeth and Heidi, that we got what wanted to match their interests to whatever was needed to be done.
And then just That answers, that answers the question, I I I did, I was not connecting it to that. I didn't know what, I didn't know what to connect it to. That that's a great explanation.
Yes.
I'm good, I'm good.
And and we'll document, I I do want to, I I will say out of self-preservation, we will all put that up sometime at the beginning of the year, because that's one of the items that I put on my performance review for Tony. So so when Tony does my performance review in January, he's going to say, hey, you said you were going to work with the board to library board engagement plan, did you do it? So
Yeah, we do.
Well, yes, we'll make sure that gets done.
Okay. Any other business, any other questions, concerns?
I I have one item maybe for a future agenda item, and I know we talk about it almost every month about the holds and the fact that we're usually, we're you're our uh number of books or number of items coming into us versus going out.
Yeah.
Um I I I just I know that we, since we have quite a bit of funds out there, I don't know if, is it that why is that happening? And it's been that way since I've been on the board. Um it's been consistently that way, I know with, recently, we had a month where it was, we were, I think about break even.
Yeah.
And um I just, I don't know, is that discussed at the director's meeting, is that a?
Uh it's it's discussed when there is a a huge discrepancy, you know, if 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 somebody is there, somebody's not pulling their weight, um you know, there might be just kind of a, hey, you know, can you take a look at this? Um on the on that quarterly, you know, that that twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty-two um comparison I did, I I will point out that we we've improved tremendously um in that area, so one of the things on there is the um, I did put holds received from other libraries and gold sent to other libraries. So even though we're not quite consistently at that fifty-fifty that we want, you know, over the last three years, our received from other libraries has gone down seven, seven point six percent. And the amount we're sending out has gone up by eleven percent. So we're doing a much better job of getting closer to that fifty-fifty. I mean, honestly, when I look at that, if it's fifty-one, forty-nine, I'm I'm happy, you know, if it's there's there's so much, there there's so much that can that can impact, you know. And it could be the difference between a hot movie comes out, you know, at the at the end of the month, and one library gets their shipment faster than another library. And, you know, that can
I didn't know, I didn't know that was related to our collection.
I there's I I think when we look at, you know, that's one thing that we'll be looking at when we do budget development and how much goes to collections, you know, we can look at what the demand there is. Um
Is that something looked at as you're developing the collection, what stuff are we getting, whether libraries that we don't have here?
So we have a report that um that that uh the county sends out every week and it lists, it's called the purchase report. And so it shows um by, and our staff has helped really uh develop this and and make it a lot more user-friendly. It's it's pretty cool with, we have a very technologically savvy staff named Adam Murphy, and he's made this really cool, and other libraries have used our format and really appreciate it. So we can pull up this report and you can do library, you can see all the DVDs. Uh my patrons have on hold or that anybody has on hold, where the ratio between what we purchase and what, you know, we should be purchasing based on the holds amount is wrong, you know, so hey, there are sixty holds on this DVD and we've only got two copies. And so we know that we should buy more copies. Now, there there's kind of unofficial agreements between libraries and link cooperative about what an appropriate amount is to buy. So there's generally on on um print materials is generally a four-to-one ratio. If I'm, oh, yeah, it's generally a four-to-one ratio, the the basic expectation, so if you've got um forty holds on an item, you should at least have ten copies, you know, of something to to maintain that four-to-one ratio. Sometimes
We are, we are going into detail now, I just wonder if we could, if we could add that as a uh top uh one of our gen- our future agenda items.
We certainly, I would probably say we would have a work session on that, and we could just kind of dig into the nitty-gritty of it. I I will warn you to advance, I'm going to go post it on you and talk about all the things that can impact
I'll be there with you.
Okay, all right, the the one thing, I'll just say this, the the primary things that that impacts that that um that ratio is the way our cooperative works. Um is when somebody puts a hold on the system, the symphony system, you know, it's got an algorithm that says, okay, if I'm going to fill this, here's the libraries I can look at first, you know. And so there are, there are things that we we could spend more money on certain things and it would not impact, necessarily impact that ratio just because of the way that that the algorithm works. And the network office tries to kind of tweak that periodically, and the last time I talked to um the materials coordinator about that, he had basically said, you know, we we we've kind of tweaked that, there are probably some things we can do, but it's just, you know. It's it's hard, uh it it's always a moving target of what tweaks you can make and how that's going to impact where materials are going, which is why
It's kind of a measure of the fact that we are part of this network.
Yeah.
And and and, you know, if we didn't, if we didn't, if we weren't part of it and we were a freestanding library, you know, it's it, I mean, it's there's obviously a lot of shipping books and uh materials
Yeah.
all over the place.
Yep, yep, so we can, yeah, we can definitely look at, we can definitely talk about that. So I'll I'll add that to the future items um, try items list, and maybe we'll think about scheduling sessions. Dig into that.
Hey, the meeting is adjourned at six eighteen, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.